Yeah, you can go if you have to provide it. I can't really.
We have an added need and people.
That actually, you can frame this, that's easy. I just didn't want to say it.
I'm in Jersey.
It's not.
Right.
There's Lord, Lordy, mercy.
Like I said, you can slid up and everyone paid attention.
I don't think it's in here, but I guess in line, I guess we have.
Good.
I didn't know from the control was switched with the pixel. I don't think it's in here. I didn't notice when I was reading.
I read this on Friday.
Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for May 24th. Please join me in the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence. Thank you.
By the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and please be seated. Okay, we're going to start out with item number one, honoring the Woodlake High School for winning the Valley Soccer Championship and Supervisor Worthley. It's his district. He'll be handling.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would like to welcome to our meeting this morning the entire, we have the entire soccer team of the Woodlake Union High School. And before they come forward, we'd like them to come down here in a moment and stand in front of the board and get their picture taken with us. I have a proclamation to read, and this is honoring the Woodlake Union High School Boys Soccer Team as the 2011 Central Section Division Valley Champions. Whereas Division Five of the California Interscholastic Federation Central Section is comprised of high school soccer teams covering Fresno, Kings, Madera, and Tulare Counties. Whereas on March 2nd, 2011, the Woodlake Union High School Boys Soccer Team beat the Sierra High School Chieftains three to one to claim the 2011 Central Section Division Five Valley Championship. And whereas the win marked the first Central Section CIF Valley Championship title by Woodlake Union High School Boys since 2004. And whereas Coach Freddie Palomo's champions know all too well how it feels to come so close yet to be denied the year before Woodlake was eliminated in the Valley Championship Game One Zero by Mission Prep High School in San Luis Obispo. From that defeat, the returning players dedicated themselves to playing for another championship. And whereas the Woodlake Union High School Boys Soccer Team finished the regular season at fourteen, six, and three. Now therefore be proclaimed that Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor the Woodlake Union High School Boys Soccer Team for winning the 2011 Central Section Division Five Valley Championship dated this date, signed by Alan Ashida, Vice Chairman Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Steve Worthley, and our Chairman Mike Innes. So let's give them a hand. I've asked the coach if you'd have your members come down and stand in front here. We'll come out and grab a picture with you. Also, we have certificates of congratulations for each of the boys. And I would like also to say that, come on down, guys, that the coach, Jose Palomo, has been named the 2011 Coach of the Year for Union Woodlake High School by CIF. So we want to recognize him as well. Come on in, guys. Come on around here. Congratulations to you all. Thanks for coming and joining us this morning. School's about out, right? What year last day? Next Thursday. So Coach, you want to tell us about your boys? There's a microphone right there.
Sure. That's fine. I apologize. Uh, thank you to County Board of Supervisors for honoring the boys because honestly, they're the ones that make me look good. They do the work. They do the workouts. Uh, so as I've always stated, it's the boys. So thank you for honoring us. Uh, this year was particularly hard because we did lose a member of our coaching staff in an accident back in December. And I believe at that point, that's what turned our season around. Sorry. It really helped us to refocus what our goals were. It helped us to appreciate one another that much more. And I believe that's going to make this championship team stick together throughout the years. So once again, thank you, gentlemen. Like I've always stated, this is your time. Don't forget this. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, team. That's the icing on the cake when you win the Valley Champion at the end of the year. That's the thing that makes it all worthwhile. So congratulations to you. Okay, let's move to item number two. Presentation given by Health Human Services, Department of Mental Health, Tulare Youth Services, Happy Trails Riding Academy, Dr. Dirksen.
Good morning, Chairman Innes, members of the board, Ms. Bennett, Ms. Bales-Lang. Thank you for the opportunity to bring several programs before your board this month in celebration of Mental Health Awareness Month. This morning, it's my pleasure to introduce one of our newer programs, Equine Facilitated Psychotherapy, a collaborative endeavor between HHSA Tulare Youth Service Bureau and Happy Trails Riding Academy. I had the opportunity to meet the staff and board of Happy Trails about two years ago at a meeting facilitated by Supervisor Vanderpool. And we basically jumped at the possibility of developing a new program to serve our children in treatment, specifically a program using animals as a therapeutic tool. Most people are aware that animals are therapeutic and it's common sense to most of us, but there's also a burgeoning literature and substantial outcome data regarding their therapeutic effect. So before Mr. Savala, the Clinical Director of Tulare Youth Service Bureau, comes forward to provide a brief video and PowerPoint regarding all the specifics of the program, I'd like to introduce the county's partners on this project. From Happy Trails, we have Leslie Gardner, the Executive Director, Lisa Cottamix, Program Director, and a member of their board, Andre Gaston. From Tulare Youth Services Bureau, we have Cheryl Lennon-Armus, the CEO, Tim Savala, of course, who you'll meet in a minute, and Pablo Martinez, our clinician who works with the program. Mr. Savala's going to come forward at this time and walk through a very brief PowerPoint, followed by a video. And I just wanted you to be advised that we've secured all the appropriate consents to show this to you today as well as the public.
Thank you, Dr. Dirksen. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me this time to present this program. We have, is the video? We have a lot of really outstanding mental health programs for the clients that we work with. But one of my absolute favorites is the Equine Facilitated Psychotherapy Program. As you heard, it is an incredible collaboration. The staff at Happy Trails has been outstanding to work with, and the support from Dr. Dirksen has been so appreciated. Equine Facilitated Psychotherapy is an innovative therapeutic approach for children with a variety of mental health disorders. And before I go into some of the specific mental health disorders we're dealing with, I just want to tell you really briefly about the clientele that we're working with. We're a contractor provider for individuals who have Tulare County Medi-Cal. So these are individuals with a lot of different stressors in their life. On top of that, they have mental health diagnoses such as Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder, Oppositional Defying Disorder, Depression, History of Abuse or Post Traumatic Stress Disorder, Reactive Attachment Disorder, and Anxiety. So what's really great about EFP is that it provides an opportunity to learn self-discipline and the ability to manage emotions. But what's special about it is that it offers a live medium for the children to address their issues. So for example, a child with anxiety has to deal then and there with the anxiety of getting on this really big animal. A child who has a history of abuse and has issues with boundaries has to really follow the rules and be very gentle with the horse and introduce themselves to the horse. Children with reactive attachment who have difficulty bonding with anybody, they learn to really trust the horse. And the horse and the child are able to develop an incredible bond. So there's just many, many really amazing ways that it's benefiting these children. We currently have sixty-two clients that have completed at least one group cycle, and the group cycles are ten to twelve weeks. Right now, we have twenty-six participating in group, and on May 31st, we'll add another twelve. So we've been able to help quite a few kids. Now, we wanted to try to measure some outcomes, some therapeutic outcomes, and at the time that we started this pilot project, there wasn't, we did some research and found that other EFP programs don't have outcomes that they're doing. So we chose a couple of measurement tools that we were familiar with. One of them is the CALLOCUS. That's the Child and Adolescent Level of Care Utilization System. And essentially what that is, is it levels, it measures different levels of competency for the kids, different areas in their life. And what it tells the clinician is what is the frequency and intensity of the mental health services that are required. And so when they have a lower score, that means that they have now, they now need less mental health services because they're functioning much better. So here, it shows that for the participants, we saw seventy percent of them decrease their scores on the CALLOCUS. The other one is the CBCL. This is the Child Behavior Checklist. And what this is, is the caretaker guardian goes through a checklist of behaviors that they see in their child. Here, it shows that seventy-nine percent of the caretakers reported an increase in their child's competence in various areas of their life, and sixty-one percent reported a decrease in overall problems. So the outcome data that we have so far is very promising, and we're excited about that. The other thing is that the kids that are in the group at Happy Trails, they also have individual therapists. So they go back to their individual therapist. They're able to continue to process what they're learning there. This is some of the artwork that one of the children did. And this is another one. You see here that the horse is saying, "I'm here for you," and the child saying, "I know you are." So I'm going to go ahead and show you a short video. And what you're going to hear in a moment are the children actually making statements about how Happy Trails has benefited them.
Happy Trails has helped me on Wednesdays when I go because it helps me get through the day. Those two hours are peaceful and stressless. It has also boosted my confidence because they tell me I'm doing a good job. I see the progress I'm making, and learning how to ride a horse is therapeutic, peaceful, and relaxing. I like knowing that there is one day out of the week that I can go ride a horse and be confident that I know what I'm doing and I'm in control of the situation. I would really like you guys to continue the program so that kids have a place to go once a week to feel the way I do every Wednesday I go.
Dear Happy Trails and Vixen, thank you so much for teaching me how to ride a horse and how to work with her. I will miss Vixen and all of the workers there. Happy Trails and Vixen have helped me with anger, irritation, and depression. Goodbye and thank you. I'll miss all of you.
I find it beneficial as like therapy to help me with my anger. It's relaxing and overall, I just like what the Happy Trails provides me.
It's been a therapeutic thing, so, you know, it's been there and I've done it. It's been helping me get progressively and progressively more and more better. And just being, you know, being with friends, being with, you know, you actually kind of make this like your own little family. Like you come here, you learn everybody's names, you know, you just start to get along. It's like the brother you never had, but still, so, yeah.
Whenever I get mad at someone, I stop and think about Happy Trails.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I don't have a question, but I'd like you to talk about the new equestrian area that you have that's covered, which means-
Yes, the canopy that has been built there, we're really excited about it because now we'll be able to do the groups year-round in the summer. Last summer, we had to take a break, and a lot of those kids were just really itching to get back to Happy Trails. So we're so excited about it. It is beautiful and amazing, number one, but it takes the temperature down about fifteen to twenty degrees when you step under that canopy. So it's very exciting.
Do you have a question? The one child indicated that she was sad to say goodbye. Are there opportunities for children to continue to participate in programs there even after they've completed their cycle?
Yes, actually, that particular child moved out of state, so that was why she was saying that. But many of the children, as long as it works with the schedule of the family, are able to do more than one group, and several of them have.
And do you have, what is the sort of the demographics? I mean, do the people come from all over the county? Are we talking about outside the county as well? Or where do our children come from?
No, they're all within the county. They're all Tulare County Medi-Cal recipients.
Very good. Thank you.
And I was just going to make a comment. I don't really have a question, but I really am happy to see that we have formed a partnership between the Mental Health Department and Happy Trails because it's a win-win for both, and it's really a unique therapy. And Happy Trails has so much to offer, whether it's the Sensory Trail or the Sense Pavilion and, you know, and just their regular riding facilities. They have so much to offer, and it's just really, really positive to see this. And I feel great about it, and I'm really glad that that video didn't include a little bit of me in my boots and my shorts and my cowboy hat out there, working in the trees. So real glad that you guys brought this forward, and thanks for showing the board what their program's doing.
You're welcome.
Well, that's a thought. My just firsthand knowledge of, we have a family friend who has a child in the program, and the program really works. Wonderful program. This is a wonderful partnership, and I'm glad to see, you know, things like this happening in the county, you know, for the most vulnerable. So thank you.
I'd just like to close with, I was out for your groundbreaking when this whole thing started and wasn't able to get out for the ribbon cutting. But what a beautiful facility. I drive by there a couple of times a week, and I know you're proud of that, just as we're proud of the new facility we got at the Porterville Fairgrounds. So that big barn is pretty proud for us, too. So, but great, great program. Anytime you can get kids around animals, you're going to help them a lot. So, and I'm glad that you didn't put Pete in there because... But no, thank you very much, and we do appreciate what you're doing for the community, especially with the mental health people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dirksen. Okay, let's move to item number three, which is public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board on issues that are not on the agenda today but are pertinent to the Board of Supervisors may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment and bring it back for Board of Supervisors Matters. Start with Supervisor Ashida.
Last week, we did a tour with the National Resource Conservation Service. We're still working on Fraser Creek and White River, trying to mitigate the flooding of those two streams. And we're trying to work out a program to where we can take it out of the hands of the Corps of Engineers and put it into the hands of the USDA. Because it fits their old programs better than what the Corps does. When the Corps looks at something and we're only looking at a half a million dollar project or a million dollar project, it kind of gets put on the bottom of the scale. And after what's happening on the Mississippi River, it's probably going to be a long time before they're going to have the time to devote to these smaller issues. Last Saturday, we had the Relay for Life in Exeter, which was very successful. And I thank everybody that participated. And also Saturday night, American Leash and Post 785 had a function dinner honoring our Silver Star winners of Tulare County. And there were approximately three hundred and fifty people there, mostly veterans, to honor those, to honor the Silver Star recipients. It was a great function. That's all I have.
Okay, Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we had our normal San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board meeting, and we had a hearing on our budget for the air district. The funding sources for air district are very different from local government, and so we don't have the financial stresses that county and city governments are facing in the state of California. We do have basically two separate budgets. One is for our operations. The other is for our program designed to provide funding for various aspects of our valley, including bus replacement, truck replacement, engine replacement, where we move from diesel engines to electric engines on different situations and improved air quality projects. I just wanted to say that this year, we anticipate we will have approximately $220 million. And again, this is money that we, when we give it to someone, they normally have to match it. So you're talking about perhaps as much as a $440 million investment in upgraded technology, which will help to improve our air quality. And so it's quite interesting to see how all this works out. And the district, I have to commend the district because they are one of the most efficient governmental entities that I have ever seen. We probably have the most efficient air district in the nation. We have the lowest fees. We have the smallest staff. And it's because they really work on technology and how to improve their delivery of services. And I've encouraged our CIO to have us, you know, because they're a resource for us to look at as a county, of opportunities how we might do things differently in our own county to be, you know, more efficient with our efforts. So anyway, I just wanted to pass it on to you all as your representative on that board. This week, I will be going to Sacramento also as your representative on the Commission for State Mandates, where we hear those claims against the state of California for mandates which are mandated but not funded by the state of California. That's all I have today.
Before I do, I have a question for Supervisor Worthley. I've seen your book on that committee you attend for the state mandates. Is it still six inches thick?
Actually, what I get now is about four inches, and then there's a flash drive that would normally be about like this, a background material.
Amazing amount of reading that Supervisor Worthley has to do with that. I commend you for it. I would not want to do it. Well, a couple of things. You know, we're coming up to the end of the school year. I'd like to remind the board members and those listening and those in the audience, the loop bus service is still available for the county. We typically see a little bit of drop-off in use during the summer months. We know activities for youth don't decrease, but usually the demand for the loop bus does. So I'd like to encourage you to let those that do work with youth, that loop bus is still available running through the summer. Along with that, Summer Night Lights program is gearing up to start June 10th of Isalia, Farmerville, and Porterville, three communities that have been, are working with us to, you know, provide programming for young people every Saturday night through the summer. Give them a place to go other than on the streets and something to do, an opportunity to get into mentoring programs. And I think one of the most positive things that we're employing eighteen young people with the help of the Workforce Investment Department to learn how to provide programming for young people and to staff and run those events. The Lost on Purpose movie, if you've not been reading the emails from Eric Coyne, is over halfway through filming. They have a thirty-day filming schedule. Sunday night was day eighteen. Mr. Coyne twisted my arm into being a walk-on. I thought it would be a quick in-and-out process. I got there at eleven-thirty at night and went home at five-thirty yesterday morning. So I would not want the life of folks that do that for a living. If I could, our Assistant CIO, I'd like to request that at some time, we receive a report on the road repairs that have taken place since the flooding. I know while the flooding was going on, we had pictures of washed-out roads and rivers where roads were. And to date, I've not received an update. I'm sure those supervisors who have those roads in their district have. I'd like to see, you know, the before and after picture where roads were gone and are now are back. I wonder if we could have some type of a short presentation before this board. Supervisor Ashida and myself, we're at the Happy Trails Ribbon Cutting. We missed the groundbreaking, but we were there for the ribbon cutting. A very nice event, a very wonderful pavilion there for the young, for the folks to write underneath. Last thing I have on my report is we did, I sit on Retirement Board as this board's representative, and we received a, I guess, a comment from the grand jury this year attacking the plan. And I can assure this board, and you've seen the reports that have come out, that the Tulare County Retirement Plan is a healthy plan. Assumptions that are made in the grand jury report will have answers to those. But I can assure you that as the hype starts to build over this, that the Retirement Board members, myself sitting on the committee that will oversee the answer to that report, are confident that we're able to answer the report in a way that will be acceptable to the public because we do have a very healthy plan. We are now in the $1.1 billion range. We've gone back up from the low and the set, you know, the under eight hundred million. So the plan is healthy and moving forward. The reports that are mentioned in the grand jury's report are outdated by three years. As we sit here today, they use a three-year-old report that was written during the worst economic times of our stock market in the last decade or two. So... economic times of our stock market in the last decade or two, so excited to report to the board that we will have our report coming out in response to the grand jury's letter.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Okay, just a few things to wrap up. Last week, we did have the Step Up Event in Alpa for Alpa and Allensworth residents. It went great, we had about 300 kids there and over 100, or close to 100 adults, very, very positive, and provided a programming to the kids during school, and also provided resources for families, and we had great transportation through the loop bus, and I just want to thank all of the members of the Sheriff's Department that were involved, and Probation Department, and all the other groups that worked hard, and thank you to Mental Health and Alcohol and Drug for being there. We had a great group of people there, providing resources to a group that doesn't often receive them, so really proud to have that happen. A couple things going on this week, the State of the City of Tulare address is gonna be tomorrow, that starts at noon, and that is at the Edison Ag Tech Center in Tulare, so it'll be interesting to hear exactly how the city of Tulare is situated right now, and also, they will hear an update from yours truly. And then also, this week, on Thursday, at 6:30 at the Chamber Office, is going to be the Leadership Tulare Graduation. They've got a smaller group, but it's still nonetheless a great group of young people that care about the community of Tulare and want to learn how to make it a better place and get involved and make a difference, so real excited to be there. Then lastly, on Monday morning, the Ambettes in Tulare are putting on a Memorial Day commemoration event at 10:00 a.m., and that's in Tulare, so just wanted to go over those few things. Thanks.
Thank you. I can tell you Supervisor Cox, that Road 224 is still out and gone, and until the water goes down, Deer Creek's still running pretty good, now the roads that weren't impacted by river flows probably could be first on priority, but 224 is gonna be a while till the water goes down.
Mr. Chairman, I thought that Mr. Cox was a little bit assuming a bit there that things have changed. It will be a while before these projects are, I think, are completed, but...
There's still a river running across the road, is what you're telling me.
Well, there is no road, there is no road for probably 200 feet, I mean, it's gone, including the pipe corral, so it is gone, but Johnny Wong tells me that as soon as possible, they'll be on that to make a fix on it. Okay, last week, we had the Alta Vista Step Up Event last Friday at Alta Vista School, was great. I was telling Supervisor Cox, I've never seen so many different configurations of bounce houses in all my life, but the kids loved it, we had, probation was there, the Sheriff's Department was there, Family Healthcare Networks, the Arbutic Hospital, I think the Girl Scouts had a booth out there, we had a kind of a fair, and then they had hamburgers and hot dogs for everybody, and more or less just to get together and get all the people from the community out there, and the kids and everybody together, to kind of close out the year at Alta Vista School, but a great event. Later on that night, I went to, out to the fairgrounds where we had the FFA and 4H Awards for the Porterville Fair, and was pretty proud of my niece, she was Grand Champion Steer, and this is something that never hardly ever happens, the Grand Champion Steer at this event won the carcass contest, which is hardly ever seen, hardly ever seen, so this was kind of a once-in-a-lifetime deal for her and her family, so very proud of that. Last night, I attended the soccer awards out at Terabella School, where they gave out awards, and every kid got a trophy, and there must have been 18 different soccer teams out there. What a great program, keeps the kids off the street, keeps them busy, gets them tired so they don't get in trouble, and gives them a kind of a focus in life, so very proud of that too, so that's just looking forward to the next events coming up in our communities, and hopefully we'll make a better community for all of us to live in, and that's the whole part of it. So, that's all I have this morning, and let's move on to Consent Calendar. We're gonna remove item number 12, because Supervisor Cox, we'll have to vote on that separately, since he served on first five, so I would entertain...
Mr. Chairman, and I don't mean to interrupt, I just want to clarify, I did receive a phone call from a constituent with a question about, and the online version of our agenda, and it had the MOU for the Ivanhoe item and the MOU for the Pixley item mixed up, but that is correct, and the agenda we're approving, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And I would move for approval of the consent calendar, less item number 12.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Vanderpool?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Worthy, cast your votes. Votes unanimous.
Cox, Cox voted twice.
How did that happen?
No, you don't need to vote, Phil, because we're gonna pull that off.
I think that was a mistake.
No, I accidentally hit it.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
There we go.
Okay, now we'll pull item number 12 off for a separate consideration.
Move of approval, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Supervisor Worthy, second by Supervisor Ashida, cast your votes.
I did hit the abstain one.
Okay, it's unanimous, less standing by Supervisor Cox, okay. Okay, let's move on to our untimed items. Item 46, Presentation of Activities at Tulare County Resource Conservation District, Sequoia Fire Safe, Mr. Pouls?
Mr. Chair? I need to have, I have some documentation for Lori Mercer, and she just walked out the back door. Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Bob Poulsen with the Sequoia Fire Safe Council and the Tulare County Resource Conservation District, and we're trying to get some slides to come up here. Had it working before, but it's not working now. All right, this morning, we bring the matter of a Community Wildfire Protection Plan before the board, but before we get to that, at the request of Supervisor Ashida, he asked us to speak a little bit about the Tulare County Resource Conservation District and the Fire Safe Council, what we do and the impact we have on the county. The other day, I was thinking about the children's story, the little engine that could, and I, some way, I compared that to the RCD, but more accurately, the RCD is the little district that does. For historical perspective, Congress authorized the formation of Resource Conservation Districts nationwide as a part of the Standards Act in 1936, in the wake of the Dust Bowl during the desperate days of the Depression. A year later, California also recognized the Resource Conservation Districts. Since then, the districts have operated and are accountable as a division of state government. They are a part of the Resources Agency, Department of Conservation. Though control remains here with the local Board of Directors, RCDs are authorized and directed to implement projects on both public and private lands, as well as educate the public in areas of watershed planning and management, ag land conservation, service and groundwater management, wildlife habitat enhancement, wetland conservation, recreational land restoration, irrigation management, conservation education, forest stewardship, and even urban resource conservation. The TCRCD is a consolidation of five former districts, and its boundary encompasses most of Tulare County. The board members, led by President Tom Daley, reflect the diverse interests of area stakeholders, and they share their commitment to conserving and improving our area's precious resources, particularly those related to soil, water, and air. The TCRCD works with other agencies to achieve common goals. We have the ability to contract with local, state, and federal agencies, nonprofit organizations, and private individuals to facilitate programs of mutual interest. Among those efforts are programs to preserve threatened species habitat, such as the tri-colored blackbird seen here, in partnership with the USDA's Natural Resources Conservation Service and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This program involves farms in southwestern Tulare County, and ensures that the blackbird's nesting habitat remains undisturbed at a critical time in their nesting cycle. Other programs focus upon air quality issues such as, correction, quality issues with researchers and the University of California. These affect ranchers concerned with both fugitive deaths and emissions. The TCRCD has funded education programs to assist local Southeast Asian vegetable and fruit growers. The highly successful program provided growers with hands-on examples of modern and efficient farming methods. Recently, the TCRCD began a technology assistance program run by our Terry Van Husse, to help area farmers and dairymen with their electronic filing as it relates to state and federal regulation compliance. Yet another program is in support of containment of invasive species, such as the yellow star thistle. In this, we work with the Tulare County Ag Commissioner and the Cooperative Extension. Seemingly simple, but just as important, is trash cleanup done in cooperation with the County of Tulare. Just recently, the RCD initiated an agreement with the Tulare County Sheriff's Office for the use of the district's water tender. It will be used for dust control on helicopter landing zones in the Sheriff's Marijuana Eradication Program. The TCRCD is involved with UC Davis on a research project involving the feeding of garlic to livestock to reduce methane emissions and its relation to air quality, believe it or not.
What's it do to the taste of it?
And early, it looks like it works. Other programs underway include watershed management improvements at Mountain Home State Forest in conjunction with CalFire's Forest Management Plan. Education is an important component of the RCD's mission. The district continues their sponsorship of Manatchee High School's environmental science teams, representing our area's schools in both state and nationwide Envirothon and range camp competitions. These teams have excelled, and as a result, have generated a wave of interest in environmental stewardship by students throughout the area. And if I might add, the seniors that are in the view here, each one of them has been accepted in the fall term by a prestigious four-year college, including Harvard. We're very proud of that. Recognizing the flammability of our region's wildlands, the related public safety issues, and the economic losses that can be incurred, the TCRCD is most actively involved in fuels reduction projects throughout our local mountains. One example is the fuel breaks that have been established in preparation for the Grouse Valley Control Burn now scheduled for early fall. Acting as a catalyst, the RCD has attained commitments from the stakeholders, ranchers, the Department of Fish and Game, and the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District, and urged them to work cooperatively with CalFire towards the completion of this important prescribed burn. Following the burn, the TCRCD will spearhead the monitoring of the watershed and anticipated improvement to the wildlife habitat. As part of their commitment to promote the livestock industry's viability, the RCD is helping to maintain and expand CDF's network of strategic water tanks throughout the region. The tanks will improve stock water availability, while at the same time, augmenting the supply of this precious resource needed in the event of wildfire. Without question, the project has benefits to the rancher as well as the fire agency that responds in times of emergency. The district is promoting cost-share funding options for ranchers who wish to participate in the program. From his paw prints, we know that a good-sized bear was the first to drink from the water trough in the view here, so we know that wildlife in the proximity receives a benefit In keeping with the district's mission to conserve our natural resources, in addition to recognizing the threat that wildfire represents to our county, the TCRCD sponsored the establishment of the Sequoia Fire Safe Council. The Fire Safe Councils are cooperative efforts between the general public, stakeholder organizations, and the fire agencies. The mission is to raise residents' awareness, as well as perform specific projects in and around communities at risk of catastrophic wildfire. An awareness message that the Fire Safe Council takes to the community is that of defensible space. The homeowner residing in the wildland urban interface can prepare for the fire by providing adequate clearances around their structures. This clearance, along with other important preventative measures, can go a long way in helping the fire agencies better defend the individual homes. The Sequoia Fire Safe Council works with the TCRCD, establishing shaded fuel breaks and other fuels reduction projects near structures that involve the removal of vegetation and the chipping or burning of brush. Brushing involves the cutting of brush and limbing of trees to eliminate the highly flammable vegetation and ladder fuels. Ladder fuels are those that will allow a fire to climb up into the tree canopy. The goal is to keep any fire on the ground and of low intensity. Once established in the tree canopy and driven by wind or slope, a crown fire becomes very difficult, if not impossible, to contain and control. The debris left from the operation is usually piled for disposal later. The brush is chipped using crew labor and the district's chipper. When conditions permit, we use a masticator. A masticator is a giant weed eater-like machine mounted on the end of an excavator boom. Compared to the labor-intensive chipper that consumes one limb or bush at a time, a masticator's progress can be measured in acres per day. When conditions are ideal, we burn the piles, such as these photos taken along Blue Ridge Road in the late fall of '09. Every precaution is taken for the safe burning of these piles. The brush was, this, correction, the burn was undertaken just preceding unexpected rain. One can see the brush field on the right in the photo. Before the fuels treatment, the brush choked the road on both sides. The end result is an open fire break area in which fire suppression efforts are more likely to succeed in halting the advance of a wildfire. The end result is an open fire break area in which the fire suppression efforts are more likely to succeed in halting the advance of the fire, as I previously said. Here is a photo showing the shaded fuel breaks done by CalFire crews the year before. This is an example of a near-perfect fuel break in an oak woodland. The brush and ladder fuels were removed, giving the annual grasses a chance to grow, creating an almost park-like appearance. Projects using these techniques are ongoing and are located near Badger, Three Rivers, Happy Camp near Mountain Home, and the Tulie Indian Reservations. Other projects are in the planning stage for additional communities at risk. These include Johnson Dale, Sequoia Crest, and Ponderosa. The Sequoia Fire Safe Council has also aided CalFire in the re-signing of the fire control roads on ranches throughout the Tulare Ranger Unit. These new signs replace those that are decades old, and they help firefighters locate the fire, and in turn, that helps us. One project we're proud to assist is the effort to preserve and display some of our local fire history. The Blue Ridge Fire Lookout was saved from demolition and is being restored by a group of volunteers for display at the Tulare County Fairgrounds. When finished, it will be an opportunity for the public to view and better appreciate the historical significance and the role that fire plays in our community. The Healthy Forest Restoration Act, or HFRA, provides communities with a tremendous opportunity to influence where and how fuel reduction projects will be funded and implemented. This is through the establishment of a Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or CWPP. This is a collaborative effort. The stakeholders come together to establish priorities, cooperate on activities, including increasing public awareness. They work together to reduce the risk to communities and surrounding lands. We know that in the future, communities with CWPPs in place will be given a priority for funding for their projects that are carried out under the auspices of the HFRA. The TCRCD and the Fire Safe Council have completed a CWPP on behalf of the at-risk areas of Tulare County shown here. We brought together a coalition of both public land management officials and community members. We brought together a coalition of both public land management officials and community members. We gained funding and enlisted the services of an experienced consulting firm. Working together, we examined historical fire behavior and patterns, looked at fuel types and combustibility. We identify specific areas at risk and outline projects to mitigate the effects of catastrophic This map shows a project that we are about to begin in the Badger area that involves a fuel break shown in yellow that will definitely help the community of Badger. The CWPP is a dynamic document and a living plan. The CWPP will continue to be a mechanism used to identify needs and plan new projects that will become necessary as the future unfolds. The plan also creates funding opportunities for related projects. The plan will be maintained by the Tulare County Resource Conservation District and the Sequoia Fire Safe Council. All stakeholders are encouraged to participate. The many individuals, community members, and agency officials that worked hard on this plan appreciate your consideration and would ask the endorsement of the Board of Supervisors on this document. We are anxious, ready, willing, and able to put the CWPP to work. We do not want to experience here the despair and danger these scenes from Southern California portray. But the question is not if a wildfire will occur here, the matter is when. And history shows us that fires do occur, as in the case of the massive McNally Fire. This view is of one of the incident base camps for the fire that was located in Kennedy Meadows right here in Tulare County, California. Yes, wildfires burn here. What we can do, while the clock is ticking, is to prepare and to make ourselves, our homes, our ranches, and our communities as safe as possible. The Tulare County Resource Conservation District, the little district that does, is proud of our service to Tulare County. Working together with the Sequoia Fire Safe Council and our other partners, we can truly make Tulare County a safer place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you bringing that forward, Alan, and having talked to us about that. You know, our watersheds are our most important asset, and if we let wildfires clean this area up like they did in McNally and turned into moonscape, then we've got no watershed. The water will come directly down on us, and you'll have massive flooding. So I know I have a place in Sequoia Crest, and I work very hard to keep it cleaned up around there and all the laddering effect off the trees. I clean well over 100 yards from the place, but it's once that fire gets in the canopy, then that's the biggest fear of anybody that has mountain property. Once it gets in the canopy, it's almost impossible to stop.
Anybody else like to, Alan?
Yes, I'd like to thank you, Bob, for making the presentation. A lot of people do not know what the function of the Tulare County Resource Conservation District is and how involved the organization is in Tulare County. I also would like to hear from our fire chief and Cal Fire because we are to approve your plan, and at some time after, other board members may have a chance to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I want to make an observation. You know, this is a wonderful plan, but I want to point out that it is far from being a panacea. And the reason I say that is, looking at this report, it has been calculated that the number of acres that were burned annually, yes, just in Tulare County, within this area that you saw on that map, was 132,560 acres a year. Now, what we're talking about proposing to do here is going to affect just a few hundred acres and, of course, strategically located to try to confine fire, wildfires, so that it wouldn't perhaps go over the top of a range and/or, you know, the idea is try to limit it's, how far it would travel. But the fact of the matter is, we have a long ways to go in terms of managing our landscape to really deal with this issue of an overabundance of combustible material. I know in Sequoia National Forest, when I was involved in the general plan for that forest, that they have seen their fuel loadings go from just a few thousand, you know, per acre in terms of, just actual thousands of pounds, to many, many tons of combustible fuels. So we're looking at a time bomb, really, essentially, in the Sequoia National, I'm sorry, in the Sierra Nevada Mountain Range, and that's just in our county, but this goes up and down the entire range. And so I'm very pleased that we have this coming forward to us today. I'm very supportive of it, but I just want the public to know that this is just, you got a problem that's this big, and we're dealing with about this much of it, and we need to continue to pursue efforts, both from our national parks, our National Forest Service, private landowners, to enable them and help them to deal with this problem because it is a very serious problem. And I want to say real quickly, think about our air quality. Our air quality today is 80% better than it was 20 years ago, but can you imagine what it would be like if we burnt 132,000 acres, and that's just in the mountain areas, every year, what that would be doing to our air quality? And you had similar burns in the valley floor. You have burns on the coast range, and we're talking about up and down this valley, this region. There are real implications on this in terms of public health, as you said, our watershed protection, and this is a very big problem. And I think this is kind of a beginning. It's a sort of a tool for us to latch on to, but recognize that there's a whole lot more that really needs to be done in this whole area.
Yeah, real quick, I also want to hear from our chief and from Cal Fire as I read this, where there's a partnership here, and then there's, maybe there isn't, you know, I continue to hear that there's an uncertainty with the level of service that we might have from Cal Fire, not in relation, and it could be in relation to this plan, they being a key partner here, but you know, you're right, we're taking a bite out of this elephant, but you've got to start, you know, biting somewhere, and this is a good place to do it, using your Badger plan. Notice how you're protecting those areas where you have people, and I'd much rather see those areas protected than others. So I'd like Supervisor Sheed to want to hear from both Cal Fire and from our chief as well.
I think a good example of good forest management would be the Camp Edison camp that Edison Company has up in the mountains. When you look at that compared to what's right next door to it, yeah, it's night and day, and you wouldn't want to go over into where the national forest is because you can't get through there. There's too much white thorn, there's too much everything, and they're finding that the habitat is not there either. The habitat is in where the forest is managed properly, and you got to open and you keep the, where you can have fire on the ground and bring fire in and use it as one of the things. So, no, I'd like to hear from the chief and from Cal Fire, too. Please.
Steve Sunderland, Tulare County Fire Chief.
Good morning, Kirk Swartzlander. I'm your local Tulare unit chief.
From the county fire department, fire chief's perspective, I'm going to have to put a former hat on as a former state employee to really address the CWPP. And first of all, I'd like to commend Mr. Pauls for the presentation he made. I've probably seen a dozen of these over the course of the last 15, 20 years. This has been the best presentation that I've witnessed. This plan is a forward-looking plan. It's a comprehensive plan, and the best thing about it is it obligates the county to no financial issue. It's proactive. The obligation that the county fire department has in this is purely as a signatory so that it opens the door for grant opportunity for the RCD. Without the support of the county and Cal Fire and the local fire agency, whether it was a fire district or a county fire department, is immaterial. It's the local fire agency for the jurisdiction that must sign. Opens that door for opportunity for grants for them to apply and receive funds. The obligation that the county fire department would have on a project such as the burn that's being planned in Badger is a couple of minor situations there. We would likely provide one or two fire engines if there was a helicopter landing area to keep that area damp and to provide a crash rescue service to the helicopters as they come and go. We would do that on a wildfire locally. And any structure protection that might issue from an encroaching vegetation burn or a wildfire in the same vein. I'll let Chief Swartzlander comment for me.
We stand in unity here together, both Tulare County Fire and Cal Fire. He's kind of, he's a little taller than I am, but I had to move the mic down just a little bit. But we do stand in unity in these projects. Cal Fire has a significant commitment to the CWPP, Fire Safe, and the RCD. We work with them on a monthly basis. We attend meetings. We contribute crew hours on a regular basis. We contribute dozers, equipment. For example, the grouse burn that's planned to go somewhere around the 15th of September. We tried to make a remark last year. Air quality didn't support what we were doing. We're working with a lot of cooperative agencies on this. Cal Fire, in the local unit, has a $50,000 investment that comes out of my budget to support that project. It's a 1,700-acre fuels treatment. It's going to benefit watershed, critters in the area, and it's going to contribute to viable firefighting. As you know, in the mountainous areas, we've got eight stations. It takes time to get to these incidents. We have air assets both at Fresno and Porterville. It takes time, on the average, you know, 15, 20 minutes to get an air tanker on the scene. These shaded fuel breaks give us something to start with. It's a great program. In addition, the grouse project will help us keep fires out of the park. Yeah, we're taking small bites of the elephant. We're always looking for creative ways. My forester, David Shy, is a big proponent. Why don't you stand up, Dave? Dave is our unit forester, and he works regularly with the RCD and the Fire Safe Councils along with my pre-fire engineer, Aldo Gonzalez, who's not present today. We're a big stakeholder in this, and you know, this is our focus, to help communities that are at risk, to find better ways. In addition to our defensible space program that's going right now in the lower country, we're working below 3,000 feet to try to help those people, get them educated, get that 100-foot clearance that we need around those homes that are in danger. As we all know, if we, you know, we have more of an opportunity to save a home that has a defensible space, and that's what we're selling out there to the public.
Sure, I just want to say one thing, too. I wanted to thank CDF, you know, recently the county purchased a piece of property up in Badger, and that was a classic example of the problems that we face up there in the chaparral oak woodland type area with a large, a lot of vegetation. Combined effort of our staff and CDF work crews cleared all that property. I'd invite you to come up and take a look at it. I don't know if we've got any before and after pictures, but it's quite amazing to see what we did and how many cords of firewood we created out of that. But I mean, it's just an example of what, I mean, that's a, what, a 10-acre parcel, Steve, we bought, or seven acres up there. If you multiply that out by what's out there, I mean, the, it's like a sea. You're kind of peeing in the sea when you look at what's up there. But as you say, you have to begin someplace, and these strategic projects which aim at where we go with fuel breaks and shaded fuel breaks are very critical to helping CDF, you know, Cal Fire's ability to be able to respond to these fires and protect the property owners that are up there.
One other thing I'd like to mention, too, is the jewel that's sitting up on top of the mountain. It's called Mountain Home State Demonstration Forest. Currently, we're working on a 700-acre fuels treatment program up there with some federal dollars, a grant. We're trying to protect our jewel. We're talking about biblical redwood. We're talking recreation. That was one of the only state demonstration forests that was actually created for recreation back in the 40s. There is marketable timber there. We're trying to demonstrate the best methods, best practice for the industry. We have a close relationship with the sawmill in Terabilla. There's so much education that's going on up there, and I would like to invite you all to a tour to Mountain Home State Forest with my forest manager, Jim McCrull. Be a real good day.
Chief, I just want to make a comment that I, you know, I really applaud your effort to educate the public because, you know, we always hear about these catastrophes in forests throughout the state, and really, the best method of prevention is education.
Absolutely.
And if you can get people to buy into this philosophy and buy into what you're teaching them, we can sure save a lot of catastrophe from happening. So I was going to make that point, and I also think it's really good to see that the county fire department, the RCD, as well as Cal Fire, all working together, along with the public, to make this happen. I mean, because really, all of our agencies are little trains that could, when you think about it, because that's a big forest up there, and there's a lot of, it takes a lot more manpower and a lot more, a lot more resources than what we have to offer to get this done. So when we can combine our resources, we can achieve a lot more. So I commend you guys for this plan and for that outreach.
You know, that's true with firefighting as well. Every response that we go to during the summertime, we started staffing engines on Monday. We've got eight engines in the field as of today, two dozers and five hand crews. Every response is an inter-agency response, and that's part of our partnership with Tulare County and the Forest Service, BLM.
Sure, I just, I would like to follow up and take up that invitation. I think it'd be great if we could try to get that scheduled. I think it'd be very informative for all of us, the board members, too. It's much like what you see in Edison, is what we're doing up there.
Right, right, and I should have brought that up. And of course, the Indian Reservation, too, is doing their best to make sure that their forests stand and they don't get the massive fires up there. So, no, do appreciate that, and we'll have to take them up on that.
Thank you.
Come in, sir. If not, we need, this is a...
Move approval.
Supervisor Sheed, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. unanimous. Thank you very much for that good report. That's very, very important, especially to Tulare County and the whole Sierra Nevada Mountain. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number 47, criteria for the supervisors' redistricting. Mr. Jeff Forbes.
Good morning, Jeff Forbes, Board of Supervisors office, and I am one of the staff assigned to the Citizens Advisory Committee on Redistricting. On February 15th, your board voted to create that committee, and it was officially formed on March 22nd, appointing the full 11 members. Since March 22nd, the committee has met six times to organize themselves and get the process started, and additionally, the committee held three public outreach forums specifically to address the criteria to be used for redistricting. Those outreach forums were held in the evenings in Dinuba, Visalia, and Porterville. Within the next week, the committee hopes to announce dates and locations for outreach meetings to look at potential maps that the committee will be coming up with starting this Thursday. The committee plans to have one outreach forum in each supervisory district to review proposed maps, and then your board will have two more public hearings to look at those maps that the committee comes up with. Today's purpose is for you to adopt criteria for the committee to use during the redistricting process when they begin drawing the lines. I want to remind folks that the redistricting committee does have a website where we've been uploading all of our meeting dates, outreach meeting information, agenda packets, and when we do get to the point of having proposed maps, we'll be uploading those to the website as well. There's a spot for folks to submit comments on criteria or the proposed maps, and those will get sent to Carol and myself, and we turn those over to the committee. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dick Eckhoff, who is the chairman of the redistricting committee, and he's going to speak to you more about the specific criteria that the committee is recommending to you today.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors. It's been an honor to serve as the chair of the 2011 Advisory Committee on Redistricting. It's been a pleasure to serve with 10 highly motivated citizens of the county. And I'd like to thank the staff, the county staff, Jeff, Carol, Barbara, and the rest. They've responded rapidly and been friendly and helpful whenever we needed anything, with a lot of smiles, too. We received an orientation, including written guidelines on the committee bylaws, Election Code Title 42, and the Brown Act, a report from Hiley Wallace, Tulare County Elections Department, discussing the problems of overlapping boundaries and language requirements on the ballots. And just the other night, we received a presentation from Mark Clark regarding the GIS software. GIS software that will be used to draw these boundaries. I'd also like to thank Lolly Mahino and her staff, working under tight time restraints, they did an excellent job of setting up and publicizing these outreach meetings throughout the county. Between March 21 and April 27, they made contact with more than 60 organizations, individuals, and media contacts, and they've already begun scheduling Phase II meetings. We've had light turnouts at the outreach meetings, but reportedly it's due to a lack of public concern in the subject, the criteria. We're getting comments that we can expect a higher turnout when it comes to actually discussing the boundaries themselves, the hot subject that are, the sexy part that everybody wants to get in on. Despite this light turnout, we've received a large amount of valuable input. Three opinions were repeated frequently at the outreach meetings. Keep cities and communities intact, use school district boundaries, and consider urban development boundaries. In addition, one feeling that was expressed at every committee meeting, every outreach meeting, we'd like to see all the optional criteria used. The information gathered at the outreach meetings was compiled and discussed at the May 10 committee meeting. Based on that information, a decision was made by the committee to use the same mandatory, permissive, and local criteria as adopted in the 2001 board resolution without a ranking of importance. So whereas the California Code, Section 21-500, sets forth two mandatory criteria, that districts be nearly equal in population, and districts shall comply with Voting Rights Act. And whereas, in addition to these mandatory criteria, the committee recommends the following criteria. The permissive criteria contained in California Government Code, Section 21-500, for the redrawing of supervisory districts for 2011. Topography, geography, cohesiveness, contiguity, integrity, and compactness of territory and communities of interest. Item two of the following local criteria. Avoid dividing cities where possible, protect integrity of rural towns and communities, avoid dividing urban growth areas where possible, facilitate access of constituents to their supervisors, and avoid splitting election precincts where possible. Therefore, on behalf of the 2011 Advisory Committee on Redistricting, I respectfully request that Tulare County Board of Supervisors approve the criteria for the drawing of supervisory district boundaries for 2011 as presented. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Eckhoff. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the committee for the work they're doing. I was, I was at the meeting in Dinuba, and of course, everybody wants to drag out the maps. You know, we were talking, trying to talk about these criteria, and it's, and as you say, it's a little difficult to keep people focused on that because they really are more interested in where the lines are going to be drawn, but I just want to thank the committee for their willingness to step forward and be involved in this very important process, critical to good governance in our county. Thank you.
Yes, we wanted to know if we could get cots and catering when things start to get a little heavy around here, we thought we might have to camp here.
One quick thing, before we started the process, Mark Clark did come in and show us how the maps worked 10 years ago, how they were able to move lines, and all the data moves along with that, and Jeff mentioned the, you know, the internet, have that available on the web. I'm wondering if that capability is going to be available to people as, because you can, you know, guess about where you would want the lines to be, but unless you see how that affects population, you might get some harebrained wild ideas, we'll move this line a mile that way, and it could, you know, reduce one district by another 2, 3,000 and bump a district that's already big by another 2,000 or 3,000. I'm wondering if folks will have the ability to play with that before they come to the meeting, so that your meetings aren't chewed up with everybody wanting to move the line a half a mile.
Yeah, we're trying to keep the website as updated as possible. Maps are available out there now, and we will put these out as available. I think, I've looked at them a little bit, and the enlargements, as you blow them up on your computer, look pretty good, they get right down showing the street names and so on. So, I think they'll be able to pick that up pretty well. And then, of course, we'll be going out to the public in these five meetings with three options, and it's going to be interesting because the growth in Visi, Visalia this year has forced it to where it's going to have to be at least two districts, and I think there's going to be some real big questions there where you're having to divide within a city, and, and like you say, follow straight lines and lot lines and stuff. But we will be shown as clearly as possible on the maps that are available out there, so I think people have a good chance to see that.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Eckhoff brings up a very important issue, the city of Visalia, because of its growth, we're not, it's not any different than Bakersfield or Fresno, is that they're the major population centers in the growth areas, so there will be some division of Visalia. Right now, Visalia is represented by two supervisors.
Three.
Three, and that may not change.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just like to remind your board, and the committee has done, really, from what I understand, an awesome job so far, but in addition to what you adopted today, which are called the discretionary criteria and the mandatory criteria in the government code, your commission and your board will also have to take into account the California Voting Rights Act, which was not in existence the last time that this process was done, and the United States Voting Rights Act, which was in existence. So there are just a few more complications on the overlay.
And we have to make sure we present it to the public in a way that they understand that it does get hairy at times because of all these requirements. We will probably have to make some unseemly adjustments to follow the requirements that we've been given.
Chairman, I would move approval. I just, excuse me, just want to make one comment, I just want to commend the committee for all the hard work you're putting in, and I know it's taking a lot of time, and it's going to take a lot more time, and you might be camping places, but I just really appreciate the work that you're doing to be as inclusive as possible in this process and include as much of the public as you possibly can, because that's what really, like Supervisor Worley said, is going to result in good governance and elected officials that are accountable to the people that they live amongst, so I encourage you to keep, keep pushing forward and keep working hard and be as inclusive as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. I've worked on these before, and I've found out the more information we can get out to the public, and the more information we get back from the public, the less problem we have in the long run.
Right. Mr. I'll second that motion with a note, that there are not any huge changes over this criteria from 10 years ago, this is pretty close.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Eckhoff, good presentation, appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to our addendum item, request from county council to authorize County of Tulare to join an administrative field with the Office of Administrative Law regarding State Department of Mental Health, Letter 10-2, or sign a letter in support of the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kathleen Bales-Lang, County Council, addressing this item. This appeal came to my personal attention last night, or excuse me, last Thursday night at 7:00, and we had to scramble the CAO's office and my office to really find out what it was about. I want to extend appreciation also to Dr. Dirksen, who assisted us with understanding some of the, the more unusual aspects of Medi-Cal billing. In fact, if I understood her correctly, the way that this was done, we might never have noticed, because of the way things are billed, we might never have noticed that there were increased charges because of the arcane nature of the billing system. The issue in this matter is a policy letter which was sent out last year to all mental health departments, saying that certain charges that had been paid for, for many years, were no longer going to be covered by...
By the state.
Yes, paid for as Medi-Cal covered, were no longer going to be covered, and were with the responsibility of the counties. This is not a policy, this is a change in an existing practice, and in fact, it's a regulatory change. This is what we call an underground regulation. I've been before you before speaking about underground regulations in the state, they are extremely dangerous, and accordingly, I wanted to bring this before you, to offer you the opportunity to either participate as a party or to sign a joint letter of support of the petition. The reason, one of the reasons that I recommend this to you is that if this policy letter goes unchallenged, there are going to be a lot more policy letters going out. You'll recall a few years ago, Secretary of State Bowen had a regulation, which I believe she referred to as an audit tool, which was ultimately determined to be an underground regulation. This is, you know, this is maybe the start of something else. And I did confirm by personal conversation with the Riverside County Council, that if your board wishes to join, Riverside County is bearing all the costs, and, which is very generous of them, obviously it's a big issue for them. Dr. Dirksen has a rough conservative estimate that the cost to us, which would be to your general fund, for Letter 10-2 would be approximately $75,000 a year, again remembering we got this basically last Friday. But I, in my opinion, it's not the, it's not the cost, I hesitate to say it, it's the principle, the underlying principle, that's of much greater concern. I'm happy to answer any questions of your board, Dr. Dirksen is present as well.
Questions?
Motion approved.
I think this is going to be added to Supervisor Worley's six-inch-thick packet of material he's going to have to eat.
Many years. I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, there were two alternatives.
Right.
I think the motion is to join, to join the lawsuit.
To join, yeah, there's no cost, we'll join.
Okay, that was moved by Supervisor Worley, second by...
No, by Phil.
By the Cox, second by Supervisor Worley.
No, it was by...
Oh, by...
Interpol. I'm just chatting.
Cast your votes. Vote is unanimous, and thank you, Dr. Dirksen, for catching that, we appreciate it.
And they wonder why we don't trust them. Mr. Chair, before you adjourn, there's, something hit the news the last day or so as well about the state releasing prisoners. I would like to direct staff to come back to what does that really mean? There's the press side of it, which is the earth is coming to an end, and people are scared, and I'd like to know if we can have a presentation to the board of what the reality of this decision by these judges really is, what impact it might really have on the county.
Good idea, Phil, good idea. Okay, that concludes our board meeting this morning, thanks everyone for coming. If you have a need for closed session?
Mr. Chairman, it's so rare that I get to say this, I'm delighted to tell you, we have no closed session items today.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
You said, what, 20 minutes? Or 10 minutes, or whatever, it took you longer to say that question.